Begin the staff meeting this morning. Thank you all for being there. Being here. I'm there too. Something like that.
I'm pretty tired about that one.
Well, I've been gone for a while to colorful Colorado. I just got back and so I got a lot of catching up to do. You all will help me do that.
It's real slow now, so Sheriff gets it.
All right. Commissioners, before we get started, anything urgent to go before we talk? Okay? And Mr. Manager, do you have a presentation?
Well, yeah, we've got a couple of presentations. We're gonna let Tim talk about the Sedgwick County Park and the new art exhibit that's gonna be set up in the park. I'll talk about that. And also, the sheriff is gonna get here momentarily and talk about mental health issues. So, one thing I want to bring up is last night, our firefighters did get back from Texas. They were released yesterday and en route and got back in about midnight or so last night. I know Chief Leake told me, texted me when they had just about got to the state line. So, they got in last night and it's great to have them back.
How big of a unit did we send down? How many folks?
We sent four, but it was part of the Kansas Strike Team, our Task Force Five, that went down there. It's part of the multi-county region. I don't know how many were total part of that task force.
Task Force Five was fourteen.
Okay. We were four of fourteen.
Oh, okay. All right. David?
I heard on the news this morning that the vehicle lost two tires in Waco on the way back. How did we send them down with the vehicle that had bad tires?
I mean, clearly, they operated in that devastated area for the whole week. I'm sure they picked up something down there. I doubt, seriously, they went down there in a bad vehicle, but I think it was more related to the devastated area and what they were driving through down there to get to. It was kind of odd. So, I'm sure they drove through something, but I can get you a report on what the cause was. But, you know, they're actually, the vehicles are in pretty good shape, so it's more probably related to the area.
I figured that we had a real good enough vehicle, we're gonna send somebody all the way to Texas to do that with, but then suddenly I heard on the news this morning that they lost two tires in Waco.
Also pulling the boats, so it had extra weight on it, too. But we'll get your report on what happened exactly and why it happened. Good to have them back, safe and sound. All right, without further ado, I'll let Tim talk to us a little bit about Sedgwick County Park.
Good morning, Commissioners. We've talked about this project a couple of different times, but I just wanted to bring it up another time because we're really close to the next step. Next week on the agenda, we should have two different contracts that will initiate work on the turtle maze project as it's referred to. This project goes back to 2010. It was initiated by Bob Lampke, working with the Arts Council at that point in time. Designated the area that is just north of 13th Street between some zoo property east of the entrance at Sedgwick County's park. It's an undeveloped field right now as property of land for an environmental art park. It initiated a partnership with the Arts Council where they would identify appropriate art projects and approve the art that would then be installed in that art park area. And so, I'll have projects, I'll have two contracts for you next week to review. The artist Terry Corbett has been working with the Arts Council since 2010 to identify funding for this particular project. Some funding has been identified. And I've been working with both the artist and Martha Linsner from the Arts Council, she's the president of the Arts Council, for a number of months to get the details worked out. But what we'll have on the agenda will be two different contracts. One will be with the Arts Council to, and they're gonna act as the fiduciary party in this project. They'll gather the money, do the fundraising, collect the money, they'll pass it on to us, and then we'll contract with vendors to install the art project. So, there'll be a contract with the Arts Council for them to grant us money. And then there'll be a contract where we expend that money with a contractor who will do the artwork, install the artwork project. Artistic Stonework is the contractor that will be doing the work. This will be the initial installation. There are, if you can remember, five different projects that are planned or proposed for this. And the belief is that by getting this first turtle maze project installed, it will help with fundraising for future projects. When people see that the art park is up and running and working, they believe that they'll be able to generate additional fundraising and quickly do that process. And so, they've got Phase Two identified, ready to go as the fundraising for that. So, we're at the beginning stages of the implementation installation. That's where we're at. And I think it's gonna be a nice project for that particular piece of ground. It's pretty interesting, this turtle is a pretty interesting piece of artwork. It's about 120 feet by 90 feet, it'll rise to an elevation of about five feet. But it'll be an opportunity for kids to experience art, adults and kids to experience art firsthand.
Will each piece of the whole art garden or whatever, they are all kind of working together under the same theme or one-one thing or something totally different?
They're all nature, animal related. You can recognize right now that my background is not necessarily in art, but these are art, they are nature-related. The next installation would be a fossil, a fish fossil art piece that would be similar in scale to this turtle maze, about 120 feet long approximately. So, they're all animal, nature-related projects.
And how big's the space that we're gonna dedicate to allow them to use there? Is it two acres or?
I cannot tell you the answer right now, but I would give that very much.
And our responsibility is maintenance, but is it, does this create additional maintenance or is it just same stuff, just mow around this?
This is, the design is done with low maintenance in mind, so Mark's park staff, they mow that plot of ground anyhow, they'll be able to use the same mower and just work around it.
And then my last question, when we first started talking about this ten years ago, there was, I got contacted by constituents who thought we were putting up some sort of a pagan worship site.
Well, my background isn't in pagan worship sites either, but I'm pretty sure that there's real pagan worship involved in this. Again, I think that everything that I've seen ties to animals. You know, there will be the turtle, the fish. I know one of the pieces intended is a wall that will have paintings of buffaloes on it.
But there's sundials or something gonna be out there and people can go out and watch the sun come through the things and...
I'll get back to you on that.
Well, I told them that was not our intent and we weren't gonna do that, but I didn't know what was going up either. I just said, "No, we're not doing that," so.
Are we gonna have a groundbreaking ceremony or ribbon cutting at the end or anything, do you know?
It's an interesting question. I think that's a good idea and we probably should have something. I'll work with the Arts Council, but I guess we'll have a, probably an introduction ceremony when it's completed. That's a nice idea.
Anybody have a question? Okay.
Well, that's good.
Okay. No, I'm gonna say, are you gonna say something?
Well, a couple of things. First off, we found out it was in a Sedgwick County vehicle that lost the two tires. That's good. It was the Manhattan Fire Vehicle, so. The second thing, while we still wait for Sheriff Easter, the different staff meeting topics that we're gonna have in September. Today, we'll do the mental health. Next week, we're gonna cover the fleet maintenance lifecycle replacement plan for large equipment. That'll be next Tuesday's meeting and I'm very happy with where that's gonna be and the savings that we're gonna see from that and the process that we're gonna have in place for that. So, before unveiling that next week on the 12th. And then, also, we'll talk about the different functional program transfers that the City of Wichita, based off of some collaboration between me and Bob in trying to look for opportunities to realign, create some efficiency and effectiveness based off of some program transfers. If you remember, we just did the HUD, sent that over to the city. And in exchange, also, we're gonna get some from the City of Wichita. We're doing the analysis right now to make sure that it makes sense and we should have something for you on the 12th for that. There'll be no meeting on the 19th because if you remember, that's the city-to-city trip. And then on the 5th, which is on a Wednesday, we don't have a BOCC meeting, so instead, we're gonna do a workshop and that's where we'll cover the senior center funding as well as OIBA and SKEAD. We'll cover those three topics on Wednesday, September 27th. And that'll fill out the month pretty good. So, any questions on that?
Commissioners?
Thanks for getting that workshop scheduled.
All right, perfect.
I, if I could ask Tim another question on, if the sheriff's coming in to talk about mental health issues and so forth, I guess, what do we, what do we know, what are we doing, what's our response, how big is the problem of this opioid crisis? And I know it's not directly mental health, but it's substance abuse and every time you pick up the paper, every time you read anything, they warn that this is a big issue and I don't know how much it's hit our area and what we're doing about education preparation.
It is a, it is a growing issue and concern. We still have problems, the primary problems in this community still are alcohol, marijuana, and amphetamines, but opioids are becoming more and more problematic in our community. Things happen here a little bit slower than they happen on either coast and that's true with opioid issue as well. The sheriff has formed a work group that is looking at this, at that topic as well. Adrian just came back from some training that the state put on a week ago in Tucica. She was there with people from across the state addressing this particular topic. It's a public health issue, it's a behavioral health issue. It kind of depends on, across the country, it depends on how your health department is configured and where mental health, if mental health sits inside of the health department or is independent. In Kansas, it's independent. In some states, it's embedded. And so, you see a lot of different conferences and that sort of thing that are related to this opioid topic. It touches law enforcement, it touches behavioral health, it touches public health. And so, we've got a task force in the community that's working on that to try and make sure that we're prepared for what's coming. I know that there have been a number of questions that have gone to the Regional Forensic Science Center to see if they can identify how many overdose deaths, overdose deaths are attributed to that. It's tough to tell because the chemical heroin transforms itself after a fairly short period of time in a morphine, and so it's difficult to tell. I just saw something over the weekend that said fentanyl is now the, in the most recent year, it's surpassed all other drugs as the primary opioid that deaths are attributed to. And so, it's a fast-moving topic and so we've got some people that are doing a lot of study and research on it and making sure that we can address it as best we can. Calm Care and Addiction Treatment Service treats people with addiction to opioids as well as a number of other substances. And so, we've got that treatment experience in-house. We continue to work with funders because the newest wave in terms of treatment for opioid addiction is Medicaid-assisted treatment, or MAT. And we've got some funding from the Kansas Health Foundation to do some of that work here in the community. One of the big concerns is that there's very little funding for opioid, for addiction treatment in any type, but we're working with foundations to try and help fund, because if you're gonna use a psychiatrist to prescribe those medications, it's really expensive treatment to do. And so, we've identified a couple of funding sources and we've got a pilot program going right now in terms of Medicaid-assisted treatment for individuals with addiction issues.
Okay. Well, the spike in the jail population is not due to opioid issues, at least not at this time, is that?
I don't think so. The sheriff can address that more, but I don't believe that's gonna be causing what we're seeing in the jail right now. It may be a part of it, but...
Well, it just seems like if this is gonna hit us and it's got, you know, a fiscal note attached to it, I'm glad we're trying to get ahead of it. But between that and the jail population as it is right now anyway, we've got a couple potential problems that, you know, some things you can't do anything about, but if we can't, then we, it's a, it's a problem with finances and funding, so.
I also asked Wes in IT, there's several GIS products out there that map the crisis and you can potentially see it unfold. And he is actually researching that right now. I had gotten some sort of article from, I think, GIS Magazine that kind of talked through this and he's looking at that right now as a means for us to have a pictorial understanding of how severe the crisis is. And certainly, it's more, it's very severe out east and it's slowly kind of moving this way.
Okay. Well, for, yeah, okay, go ahead. Richard? Tim, are you aware of this idea or thought, I think it's relatively new, that thought that Medicaid expansion is exacerbating or contributing to this? Are you aware of that? Has that task force looked at that? Do you know?
I have not seen anything on that and I don't know that, I don't know that they're really not looking at, I think, that type of funding. Even if Medicaid were to expand, there's just not a lot of money in Medicaid for addiction treatment.
What about Medicaid expansion?
Right.
Exacerbating the opioid problem?
I haven't seen it.
I need to say something.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
It's just kind of recent, I'm trying to, I need to see if this is true, there's a correlation apparently in states that have Medicaid expansion, the problem is twice as bad and I just, I just want to know if you'd heard anything. I gotta keep your eyes and ears out. If you hear anything, I wanna, I wanna be able to read it and sift through the...
From the pharmaceutical side of things or from the pharmaceutical supply side of things? I'm checking.
Yes.
Because there's two kinds of opioid problem. There's the pharmaceutical side and then there's this illogical street drug, fentanyl and heroin. But I have not seen anything on that either.
I have to go back and read again, you know, increased access and of course some other, then get sold on the streets, okay? And, yeah, structuring of things, of how drug reimbursement works and incentivize, how synergy, you can read it, it's just, I just want to, you know, be aware if that's true because I think at the beginning, I already had a few questions, I want to be able to say, yes, it's true or it's not true. But I think right now, it's kind of, people are looking into this, probably in the early phase, probably can't say definitively yes or no one or another, but...
I might mention also Pastor Dave Bolden is very interested in this topic in case any of you hear from him. He is going to work with the sheriff on this task force effort. So, you'll have some church and private entities that will be involved in this as well, which it is happening, it'll be a community-wide response, so.
Well, we're waiting for the sheriff. Shall we go ahead and see if the commissioners have anything to ask? Anything to add?
I have one.
Okay, Tim?
I'm sorry, I do. Saturday is a Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting. We don't normally have to attend those, of course, but I have been attending them as often as possible, but we're actually sponsoring this one. It's gonna be an exploration place Saturday, starts at 8:30. They're asking for RSVPs by today if possible so they can kind of get a head count and have their food right. They do provide breakfast. Special speaker that day is WAMPO Chair Pete Meister. But since Sedgwick County is sponsoring the event that day, we're gonna get a chance to be recognized and maybe say something, I don't know. So, any commissioners that wants to show up or anybody else elected for that matter wants to show up, I guess is you'll get a chance to say something. It's pretty well-attended. I'd say the majority of the cities are represented in one way or the other, either through their council members or their mayors will show up. And so, I'd recommend that if you're not busy Saturday morning, please make that important to come to that meeting. It's, again, an exploration place, 8:30 this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Sir.
Okay. Richard, anything more? Yeah, well, I guess I have a couple of things that I can get back up to speed. First of all, I've seen some emails while I was gone about naming the law enforcement training center. Where are we on that? Has a decision been made or what are we doing?
I think you had the, Commissioner Dennis had the latest information in terms of, I think the...
Tony and I toured it the other day. The last discussion I saw on email was to name auditorium after Lemongon and Hill. And when I toured it the other day, I discovered there's no auditorium.
Oh, that's making art progress.
But one thing I might suggest after tour in it, and I'm taking a look at it, there's beautiful entryway as you come in that's gonna have TVs and all kinds of stuff around there. We may want to put a plaque up in that entryway because that's where everybody's gonna come in anyway and the only place that they would see it. And as I say, in honor of Police Chief Lemongon and Sheriff Hill, something along those lines.
Okay, well, has the commission expressed a consensus on what we want to do or, I mean, this thing keeps going, there's assumptions that we're going forward with it, but I didn't know if we'd ever discussed it. I, I'm not a big fan of naming buildings, but I don't mind naming the auditorium or the entry or classroom. I mean, I think that's appropriate.
This may be something that's, the board that was set up between Sheriff Easter and Chief Ramsey, this may be something that that board needs to actually make a decision on to bring to the council and commission. It seems like a perfect opportunity and a topic for them to be able to decide on.
Okay.
And so, I'd say, let's kick it to them and they'll bring you back a recommendation on what the appropriate response should be or...
And I did talk to Mike Hill and he said he talked to Lemongon and they do not want the building named after them. They want the building to be called Wichita Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center, but they would be okay with naming, putting something inside of the building that recognized their efforts on getting it there, so. And that was the last and I went straight to the source to make sure that I knew what their concerns were.
I'd also mention, and sheriff's not here yet, but his dad was instrumental in that building as well. He was the very first WFPD commander there and I believe Gary Steed might have been the sheriff's commander there. I'd have to double-check that, but that would be also, they were, those were the guys out mowing the grass and getting everything set up, although, of course, the sheriff and the chief administrated it, but it's also, would be appropriate for his father to be recognized too.
Can we just do some sort of pictorial history or something like they do in some pictures and narrative and they kind of... So, I guess we'll wait on a recommendation from the joint committee. One other thing, I noticed that Margaret Miller passed away and I don't know how many of you all know her, but she was born in my side from way back at the beginning, but a really wonderful lady and she and her husband both. And I think the commission should send a letter to her, you know, when she has a memorial service, did I say it was later this month? And so that they could read it, the memorial service from the county commission saying how much we appreciated her service to the community and solid waste issues and recycling and so forth, so. Commissioners don't have an objection because, I mean, she's a special lady, she and her husband, even though a long while for her to like me. I'm sure she really did. But really a great, a great citizen, so we want somebody to write a letter.
Perfect.
And I just got briefed on the restrictions of Lake Eppin and the Northeast Park, so I don't have a question about that anymore. And commissioners, anything to say one more time? I noticed the sheriff's came in and he's full of wisdom and information, so. Mr. Manager, I'll throw it back to you.
All right, so, I'll throw it to Sheriff. Without further ado.
Well, good morning. Is it getting ready to load up or?
Yeah.
Just double-click on the...
It's right there on the left-hand side.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
Um, several of you might or might not know, the status of mental health care here in Kansas is kind of in a flux. It's been an issue for quite some time and it's gotten to the point where, along with Calm Care, Mr. Kaufman's here. We've been working with Calm Care, you know, you guys, or three of you that are still here, approved the Mental Health Pod, which has been a huge help to us. It's been a very good conduit with Calm Care for individuals that get out of jail, still need the assistance so that they'll come back to jail. And that conduit with Calm Care has been a huge assistance. The problem is, is that we're inundated with mental health care issues in this county at this point. It's overloaded via Christie St. Joe to the point where actually in state statute, part of state statute says that the hospitals can deny care for mental health treatment folks. It is the state's responsibility and our responsibility. If they deny care, then Calm Care has to be the ones to figure out where to place the And Calm Care doesn't have the bed space nor the lockdown facility inside Calm Care. We were really concerned last summer through about the beginning of this winter that via Christie might end up doing that. So, last October, we made some inroads, brought all the stakeholders together, started discussing how we can have an effect on health or mental health care here in Sedgwick County. And so, we've had a series of meetings. What we decided to do last year, in November, we invited a couple legislators to come down to listen to our complaints, listen to the information that we have, and pretty much all we got out of them is, well, if you write some legislation, we'll introduce it. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for actually some assistance and guidance. And about the only bill that was really introduced last year on mental health care was the fact that they couldn't, the state could not ask for an outside entity to come in to run the mental health hospital. So, there was really nothing at the state level that they did. Ocelotomy has been almost, it's a little over two years now, and you might correct me on that, Tim. It's a little over two years now that they have had this moratorium, which cuts down their bed space and there's only about 110, 140 beds that is even available for the whole state of Kansas for folks to be taken up there. What else we found out was the state of Kansas, ocelotomy considers them acute care, not long-term care. So, where do we put folks that have long-term issues, like years' worth of treatment? They do 10 days up there and they come right back to our community and Calm Care deals with them. We deal with them as soon as they get back. So, a lot of issues. We don't feel that we're getting any type of assistance from the state. that we're getting any type of assistance from the state. And so September 25th, we'll be having a combined with Via Christie, Wesley, the Wichita Police Department, Calm Care and ourselves are going to be putting on PowerPoint presentations. I'm going to show you ours today. Calm Care has a very good and in-depth one too of what they're facing and show them exactly what's taking place here in Cedric County. You're more than welcome to come. It's at Via Christie St. Joe if you're interested. Let me know and I can send you something on your calendar. But basically, we'll have that go on, feed them lunch, and then there's three tours that they're available to go on. That's either with Calm Care, us, or Via Christie St. Joe campus. Thus far, we've had 11 legislators sign up and only one signed up for a tour. So what we're going to go over is just basic numbers for inside the facility. These numbers will change a little bit. I gave this presentation to somebody else in August. And so as of today, we're down to 219 inmates out of county. You've seen some of this before, but we want to make sure that they understand the costs related with our medical care that takes place in, inside the facility. How many nurse visits, how many doctor visits, how many mental health visits. And those mental health visits also don't count for what takes place in the mental health pod because that's about 16 hours' worth of service, six days a week that goes on inside the mental health care or mental health pod. 350 inmates or 25% of our inmate population is diagnosed with some form of mental illness, experiencing a significant increase in drug-induced mental illness. I think you've heard me talk about that before. Methamphetamine is the big drug now in Cedric County, not cocaine. Right now, you can buy a kilo of methamphetamine for $6,300. That is very, very cheap. Cocaine is roughly about $19,000 a kilo. And so methamphetamine, because it's man-made, made out of Drano, red pee, phosphorus pneumonia, or I'm sorry, ammonia, all of those things burns holes in you and it burns holes in their brain. So it emulates mental health issues when they maybe have never been diagnosed with a mental health issue until after they've become hooked on methamphetamine and it burned holes in their brain and they never get that back.
Sure.
Yes?
Before the 350 inmates have diagnosed with mental problems, I mean, that's plus the 29% that you'd think have.
Yeah, an additional 400% we believe have, are suspected, they have signs of mental health issues and they're not given the same type of medications. The 350 inmates, they're on like the psychotropics, the medications, they're getting additional care. Some of these folks are hard to diagnose sometimes because they're just behavioral issues. But embedded in them is also alcoholism, drug abuse, and mental health issues. So sometimes it's hard to vet out the four, to see which one they actually have a problem with.
Okay, so it's more like 54% have some sort of mental health issue, varying degrees?
Correct, correct. Approximately 1,073% of the inmates have a chemical dependency. And a vast majority with mental illness also have a dual diagnosis of chemical dependency. Inside the facility, comprehensive mental health services include an initial mental health evaluation. All inmates get that. We have individualized treatment plans, brief solution, focused therapy, group therapy sessions, psych education, medication management, discharge planning, and case management. But we're not a treatment facility. That's the issue. We try really hard not to say we're a treatment facility because we're not supposed to be, but that's a treatment facility which we shouldn't be inside the jail. And so that's, $750,000 a year the county's contributing into this, okay, for the mental health stuff. Because now we have to. But that $750,000 that, if you look at it from strictly a budget, budget management issue, we never see back, okay? And so I think locally here, we are really taking the burden. And in fact, that's what the state has done, has shoved down that burden to the locals, period. That's why we've had to do some of the things we've done. That's why you've had to fund Calm Care a little bit more because it is, it is a huge problem here. Inmates who are identified by medical or detention staff who are in need of mental health care are referred to mental health professionals to determine the level of care that is needed. Initial mental health evaluation is completed by qualified mental health professionals, including a master level, social workers, and psychologists. A referral is made based on the outcome of the evaluation. Those who are prescribed medications are seen for follow-up as the provider deems necessary. Those inmates who present with a need for a higher level of care are referred for placement in the mental health management unit. They are seen by a qualified mental health professional on a regular basis. And they are seen by the psychiatric team. Both group therapy and activity therapy services are offered. Have you all taken a tour of the mental health pod? So you've all seen it, okay. So there's step-down units where folks that we have, basically, if they're not in therapy, and those folks have to be individual therapy, then they're locked down. Unless they're eating or showering, they've got to be out by themselves because they're, they're that bad. And then we step down from there. What we thought we would see is through the step-down unit, is the final unit, we would get them back acclimated to reality and then acclimated to the general jail population so that we could put them back out in general population. We're not seeing that. When we have tried to put them back out in general population, this is the group that doesn't work well with others. They get picked on, they're victimized, they cause a lot of issues, disruption. We've seen about a 28% decrease in our use of forces inside the facility once we went to this pod. So one thing that we thought we would get out of this is more people coming through the mental health pod. That's one thing that we're not seeing. Most folks are in there until they're released from jail. Inmates who present with suicidal ideations or a history of suicide attempts within the last year are placed on suicide watch and housed in the clinic. This level of care is also used when inmates are in acute crisis. Inmates are seen daily by qualified mental health professionals who focus on assisting the inmate with returning to their baseline level of functioning. This can include brief solution, focused therapy, coping skill building, and pharmaceutical intervention. When the mental health unit was formed, a process was put into place with Calm Care to streamline the process when an inmate is released from custody. This entails Calm Care completing paperwork prior to the inmate release and the inmate patient being transported straight to Calm Care for treatment or to another local facility for treatment. The reason this takes place is due to once an inmate is booked into jail, the state of Kansas spends all Medicare and Medicaid and they have to be re-enrolled once released. One of the things that, that we found when I first came into office was, once we released them, Calm Care couldn't see them. And so we would give them maybe three to five days' worth of medication to hopefully keep them medicated so that, and it was about a two-week to a month turnaround before Calm Care could get them in their doors to see them to, because it took two weeks to re-enroll them in Medicaid. And so what was happening is these folks would never return for their appointment. They'd never show up and then it was just a revolving door because they'd come right back to jail. So what we do now is, is these individuals, we transport straight to Calm Care. Calm Care comes in about two weeks prior to when we know they're going to be released and they start the paperwork. So as soon as they leave our doors, they're taken straight to Calm Care. They're already re-enrolled, so there's a payment process in place when they're taken to Calm Care. And from that point, some of them then are transported to local hospitals, some of them are treated on-site, and some of them are released back out in the community with a plan from Calm Care, which before didn't happen. So it's been a very good process. One of the things that we just want to point out, the state of Kansas pauses the medical card for up to 45 days, which is a possible solution to some of this problem. Again, what we're talking about there, as soon as somebody comes into jail, they lose all benefits if they're there for about 10 days. If they're there less than 10, so if you're booked there overnight, you lose nothing. But if they're there for around 10 days, then they lose the Medicare stuff. Now that's something that we just want to point out. I'm not saying that that's something that, that needs to happen here. Number of transports of inmates and patients from January 2016 to May of 2016, '17, we transported 549 total transports. From 1-1-16 to 4-30 of '17, a total of 12, 467 patients, inmates were seen by the clinic. That's a typo there. It should have been a total of 467. On average, 779 patients or inmates were seen per month. The visits consist of new patient visits, follow-up visits, psychiatric nurse visits, mental health screens, special needs contacts, segregation rounds, group therapy sessions, and discharge planning This is part of the problem as well. Larnard, we have a lot of individuals that are sitting in our facility that have to have competency hearings before they can go to a prelim or to trial. And what this is showing us is, is that we're having wait lists that just are not good for us or the court system. Because everything's delayed at the point that the judge orders a competency hearing. And we're seeing a lot more of those take place. So just in May of this year, we had 17 people waiting on that list. Average wait time for those individuals was 67 days. The longest we had was 128 days. And as you can tell by the numbers on the left-hand column, the folks that are waiting compared to the inmates that actually were sent out was a long delay. And that's gotten worse because of the issues at the state system with Larnard. Part of the reason Larnard moved some of their patients to El Dorado, which if you see in the news, El Dorado's having a lot of issues, El Dorado prison, was because they moved a large amount of mental health patients or mental health prisoners to El Dorado from Larnard to free up some space so that these competency hearings can take place a little bit quicker. So they tried to maybe assist on one issue, which created another larger issue within their own system. From 1-1-17 to 5-5-17, we transported six people to Osawatomie ourselves. We use Apple Bus as our transport, but some of these folks are so bad that Apple Bus will not transport them. We had 104 Apple Bus transports to Osawatomie. That's a combination of what Calm Care sends to Osawatomie and ourselves. We transported 75 people to Larnard. Civil care and treatment orders received was 729. Civil care and treatment orders served was 631. Civil care and treatment pickup orders was three. Civil care and treatment pickup orders served was two. What civil care and treatment orders are is something that's, is, goes through the DA's office because folks need to be picked up, committed, those type of things. So as you can see, in that four-month period, we had a lot of care and treatment orders, 729. And those are folks that touch the system. These are not private folks that we deal with on a daily basis where we transport them to either Calm Care. And right now, it's mainly Via Christie St. Joe that is used. Patrol Division responds to several locations in the city of Wichita that cares for mentally ill patients, blows a breakdown of those locations. Because these are county-owned facilities, the Cedric County Sheriff's Office is the one that responds to those particular calls. As you can see, there's a breakdown, 635 North Main, which is the main Calm Care location. During this timeframe, four months, we made 1,072 calls to 635 North Main. That's a lot of calls, folks, at one location. And then these are the other ones that we have to respond to as well. Total calls for service for four and a half months was 1,287 calls. And those are all related to mental health. When a case is made by the deputy in the field on a mentally ill patient, record staff is required to enter each case into the computer and then provide the case electronically to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation. On average, each case takes 30 minutes to enter. Remember when we said we are short on staff and asked for more staff in the records division? This is what's contributing to it as well. As you can see, the cases that are made, roughly it takes 30 minutes a case to make them. We're to interman the computer. Total of 949 cases have been entered into our record system. That's total hours spent of 474.5 hours just on these particular cases. In 2016, we had two inmates that were very violent, were released on their charges. They had commitment papers and were taken to Via Christie to house until Osawatomie had a bed opening. One of the things that we discussed with the legislators last year, as soon as that person is released, I can no longer have anything to do with them. Their criminal charges are over. I can actually be charged by state statute for confining that person. And so they have to be out of my custody immediately. The problem is, is that there's really no place to take our really violent ones. And we had two that were extremely violent. They were taken to Via Christie St. Joe where they assaulted the nurses, the doctors, and that's even with us standing there before we could get on top of them. Because in a hospital setting, because they're not in our custody, I can't handcuff them to the table. And so in the timeframe in between trying to settle them down and get them into a bed, now the hospitals can restrain them if they believe that they're, they're a threat. But in between that time, they can't be. And that's when they assaulted nurses and doctors. This is the part that Via Christie became very upset about because they're having Wichita Police Department come in non-stop and dropping patients off at Via Christie. At one point, they had 18 mental health patients standing in the hallways waiting to be seen with very little police presence around. And if you've been to Via Christie, their ER is right here and their four rooms for mental health care is right here. So they're housed right next to their ER rooms, which is causing a lot of issues for them. Neither of these patients, inmates, should have been taken to Via Christie because they could not handle them. However, by state law, the sheriff's office cannot hold them due to not being in our custody. We were looking at some type of legislation that if we identify that this person is too violent because of their mental health status to be inside the hospital, that we would hold them until Osawatomie could take them. Because basically, that's what Via Christie's being used at. And they're not equipped, nor in my opinion, should they be taking these Cedric County SO has 220 deputies trained in CIT. That's our mental health training. Osawatomie considers themselves to be in acute care and not a long care, long-term care facility. When I talked to some legislators over the phone about this, they had no idea. And so our long-term care patients, they're not keeping more than 10 days. So where is it that we, we house these folks at? And I know we have, you know, different special interest groups and stuff saying, well, they shouldn't just be housed somewhere. Well, some folks, I'm sorry, do not belong in society. They need long-term treatment. And that could be for the rest of their life. Where in Kansas does long-term care go? Right now, back to our communities. With the change in state policy, moving mentally, mentally ill inmates to El Dorado, is there going to be an increase of mentally ill parolees coming to Wichita? That's a question we have for them. Because we're the only place close to El Dorado that has the facilities or has the treatment facilities that we have. So folks that are from Kansas City area, from, that are the, El Dorado is the max prison for the state. And so, you know, you're talking 10-year-plus inmates that are going to be in there, but after 10 years, where are they going to be paroled to? That's a big question for us because it's going to strain our already strained system. Because they're probably going to be paroled here because of their mental health issues. Cedric County SO is overwhelmed along with our partners. Osawatomie has been on a moratorium for over two years. Larnard is backlog with clogs, which clogs the court system. We need state legislators to recognize the issues we face locally and meet with this group of professionals to come up with solutions to this ever-growing problem. And then, of course, Calm Care has their own presentation with stats and what they're facing. The one that's really powerful, to be honest with you, is the Via Christie one. Because they've been the de facto mental health care treatment facility since I became on the department. They have a lockdown facility, but they've also shut down parts of their mental health treatment. And so as you, if you don't know the history, the state started years ago when they started shutting down mental health hospitals. And Osawatomie literally is about the only one left. Larnard's for the criminally insane and then also for the competency hearing. So something has to be done. Either the state needs to be shoving more money here, if they're going to shove this down locally, our opinion is, the state needs to give us the money to affect these issues. Or they need to look at building a new facility, which- Or they need to look at building a new facility, which now we're hearing that they're, they're talking about doing that. They're also talking about putting this out, a bid for some outside entity to come in and do mental health care. I don't know how you feel about that, but for me personally, I, I have no opinion either way. Do something. Do something to assist us with this ever-growing problem. Because I, personally, I don't, I think we've done plenty. We've been working on this issue 15, 16 years now. When we started in with Calm Care, the police departments and stuff here locally and the sheriff's office, working with Calm Care to come up with, with solutions. Because what we're also seeing is, because there's so much of it, we're seeing, and I don't want to make this a tit-for-tap, but what we're seeing is, the police department, who's inundated with calls, is bringing in mental health patients, dropping them off at the front door and leaving, because that's a county problem. So then it becomes a community, Calm Care problem and our problem, when they're actually city of Wichita residents. And so, that's been going on about two or three years now, but it's progressively getting worse, because there's so many that we're dealing with, so.
But they have the police else to take?
No, they, they have to take them there, but they should be staying with them, not just dropping them off at the front door of Via Christi and Calm Care. They're, their responsibility. We're working out those issues with the police department, and, and they agree with that, but they got, sometimes, they're still having, people just drop them off, which then causes us to come in, causes Calm Care to go, why are you here, those type of things.
You gave the number 1,150 is your total bed space. Is that included the double booking due to a few years ago?
Inside the facility, yes.
And what is it, 90, it's about 90 double book?
Yes.
And what was the total number that you had on the early slides about how much our medical costs are? Does that, did that include the mental health costs?
Well, it's, it's a, when we talk about the medical statistics, what we're talking about there is, is in '15, we had 18 patients, and the other thing that we're seeing is, is that a lot of the, the folks coming into jail haven't been to a doctor, haven't had medical care in years, and so they're, got a lot of issues when they come into the facility. Because we are mandated to, to treat individuals, we treat them for everything, which means a lot of hospital care, a lot of outpatient care. Two weeks ago, we had three people on kidney dialysis, which means they have to go three times a week, which is two deputies for each one that goes, that's a four-hour process. And so, a lot of our resources are being used up getting these folks to treatment for different issues. This here, we had 18 patients that cost us $570,000, okay? Which included their hospitalization. Fortunately, we did receive the Medicare rate, because if we didn't, those 18 patients would have cost us 5.3 million. My budget last year for medical care alone was 5.3 million. 18 patients would have went through that if we didn't get the Medicare rates or Medicaid rates. And so, that's what we're trying to point out, is, is that the fact that Medicare, Medicaid rates helps us, the county, maintain our costs, and we have very sick inmates. We had one inmate that, that he was costing us 8, 8,000 a week.
Well, the 5.6 million for total medical costs, that includes mental health?
Yes, that's, I'm sorry, if that's your question, that includes the $750,000 for the mental health pod and the additional mental health treatment that we provide. Yes.
Any other questions? So, what's the silver bullet? What's the solution?
I'll be honest with you, the, the two things that, that, and I've talked to legislators, we have got to look at incarceration differently, in my opinion. Right now, if, and drugs cause most of the crime. I would say 90 to 95% of the crime is because it's drug-related, because they got a habit, almost all burglaries, larcenies, those type of things, is to support their drug habit. Right now, depending on what their, their record is, first-time burglars do not go to prison, second-time burglars don't go to prison, convicted. It takes a third conviction for them to go to prison. My opinion is, is that we have got to look at, instead of building a prison, they need to build a very large treatment facility and give those judges the opportunity on those first-time offenses, when they have drug issues, that, okay, I can't sentence you to prison, but I can sentence you to a year in treatment, or two years in treatment, so that we can maybe get a handle on the treatment issue, which will drive down our crime numbers, because we're getting some folks into treatment instead of letting them right back out, just to start the whole cycle again. I think that's got to be part of the solution. If we can get a handle on the treatment aspect with the mental health stuff, I think we might see a reduction in some of our mental health care patients because of the methamphetamine epidemic that we're in right now, because it emulates mental health issues. And the state, when it comes to the mental health aspect, I think there's two options. They either build a brand-new facility, which they're talking about, which is much bigger than Osawatomie, or they provide the money here locally for us to do it. That's the two things that, that I'm going to suggest.
None of them are inexpensive solutions?
None of them are inexpensive, but I'm also not coming to you for the money. Because at some point, when is the state's responsibility on this? I mean, I'm asking you guys, but you, do you believe the state has a responsibility for this?
Well, we could probably figure out some way to partner with them, if we had some ongoing operational support from the state.
Well, you know, and one of the things that we're looking at, you know, those are little fixes for smaller issues. When I was asking, hey, can we house these individuals until Osawatomie gets vetted, because they, they cannot go to Via Christi? But how many patients we talked about, that's, that's a little fix to hopefully keep people from getting hurt. We got to look for, for bigger fixes, and we have to look for ways to partner with the state. You know, that, that's, it, it's very frustrating for all the individuals involved, and we probably have about 25 state members that are involved in this now, and we're all seeing the same thing, and we're all dealing with the same people over and over and over again. Now, that does cost us money. That costs us money through Calm Care, that costs us money through Jelling Services, some of the other programs that the county help fund.
Any questions or comments? Bring ways to start the week.
I'm not here to be the bearer of bad news, because this is an issue we've been dealing with for two years, and I don't know if we've been taken seriously on it, so.
Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Manager, anything else?
I think, I think that's it.
Any questions, give them a little time?
Just a quick reminder, it's Ugly, it's a Saturday night, and the other important thing this month is its 70th anniversary of the United States Air Force on September the 18th. Everybody recognizes that they split off from that other branch, and they're now one of the finest organizations in the United States.
Well, let's, let's go before we have an inter-agency fight here. All right, thanks, David. Anything from the rest of the staff this morning that you need to tell us to make us better?
I just want to announce a couple of events this week at the NCAT, Thursday, they're at 8:30. We have a couple of people from Johnson County coming down to tell us how they handle drainage projects, how they pay for them, the process they use to prioritize, and that sort of thing. It's an all-day event, but the, well, 12 cities have signed up so far, as of this morning, out of the 20 in the county, so hoping to get some more, the larger ones are all signed up, so that. And then, the other thing, the contamination of the water, that public meeting is Thursday night at 6 o'clock, and down Hayesville, it's some alternative school, like Stewart, I think it's something like that. And so, that's, that's a big event, and that's about it.
Okay, thanks, David. Anyone else? Hey, how about our other elected officials? All right, that being the case, we can adjourn.